All meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge. Rob, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer this evening?
Yes. Father God, we come before you tonight in the mighty name of Jesus. God, and we're asking for your direction this evening. Lord, we ask that you will give us the wisdom and insight, Lord, to make the right choices. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Nita, roll call without a roll roll roll.
Counselor Foster?
Present.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Butor Mistefler?
Modifications to the agenda?
Uh, yes, Mayor, there is one modification to the agenda. We'd like to add F one under appointments. Proclamations, communications, and appointments. Introduction of Finance Director Anita Kinsey.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Modification to the agenda to have F one, introduction of finance director Anita Kinsey. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Yes, aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda adding F one.
Okay, approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting, August fifth, twenty twenty-one. Review and approval of accounts payable. We have to approve the consent agenda and the accounts payable. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda from the minutes of regular meeting, August fifth, twenty twenty-one, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Citizen comments, special presentations.
F one.
Oh, excuse me. Hey, got my glasses on, now I can see. F one, introduction of the finance director.
Come on up, Nita. So, um, I've been promising you guys that I would bring, uh, Ms. Kinsey to the, um, to counsel, introduce her. This is Assistant Anita Kinsey. She comes to us from the private sector, uh, mostly, um, uh, nonprofits. She has a ton of nonprofits, so she's getting up to speed on this. She's been with us about a month. And is already doing a phenomenal job. Um, uh, she's getting everything caught up and, and getting us where we need to be, so we're very, uh, lots of experience, uh, came highly recommended, um, from, uh, you know, when we did backgrounds and stuff like that. So we're very honored to have her here and, uh, pleased to have her here, and she's doing a phenomenal job. So I'll let you tell her a little bit about herself.
Oh.
Put your hand up.
Um, well, I was born and raised in Montevista, um, uh, left for many years and came back later. Uh, when my mother was aging, um, in fact, um, thank you. Because she went to the eye doctor a lot, and she loved you.
Thank you.
But, um, so then, uh, went to work in, um, Alamos Ed, a nonprofit organization for quite a few years, um, uh, thought I would retire and got too bored, and so they were, I was lucky enough to be offered this position, and I'm grateful for that, and I, um, want to be able to, um, provide a lot of transparency and anything you need, any help, um, hopefully we'll, um, get up to speed and, and, um, work together well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome aboard. Thank you so much for what you've done already.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now I'll go to citizen comments. Sorry about that, Nita. Scheduled appearances, in order to be included in this portion of the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk, no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So the first one up, sidewalk replacement concern, Mr. Gonzalez. Come up to the podium, please, sir.
Okay, I have been trying to get some sidewalk replaced. Let me take it off.
That's entirely up to you, sir.
I noticed that I kind of feel out of place. Beyond my warning, I'm out of place.
You do what you feel like you want to do.
Yeah, I'm not fully vaccinated and everything, but I still.
You don't need to tell us.
Hey, I've been trying since mid-March to get s- a sidewalk replaced. And, uh, it seems that I have met a stone wall. Every time I, I try something, I, I don't seem to get anywhere. Uh, I have talked to the city manager, public works director, uh, other public works individuals, and I have had a hard time getting answers. I have called. We'll call you back. Uh, if I'm very fortunate, I might get a call, callback. Okay, uh, I really didn't get a lot till very recently, and chief slash city manager, uh, helped quite a bit. Uh, but, uh, I started this process and was told that by the first of June, I would have an amount. How much my portion would be because it's a cost-share program. Hey, well, come the first of June, I guess the, uh, public works director had an, an emergency operation or he was hospitalized anyhow. And I guess it was passed on to someone else. And when I spoke to him, well, we don't have anything. And I was told that as soon as they got anything, they would, uh, get ahold of me. Well, either the last part of June or the very first part of July, I spoke with the gentleman, and he told me, we have the amount that's your share, but I can't and won't tell you what it is. So right away, some antennas went up. Why, why won't you let me know that's my share? And, uh, I, I had, didn't get anything till, uh, really last week, things started to move a little bit. And as late as get my days here, Tuesday, I was led to believe that all I was getting was a four-foot wide sidewalk, fifty-foot long, uh, four-inch, and the cost was fifty-two hundred dollars. You know, I, I couldn't, couldn't comprehend that. And, uh, you know, I, I says, that's, that's way too much. And, uh, I have done, I don't know, somebody know me, but I taught school for thirty-some odd years. So I don't come and do something without doing homework. Hey, I, uh, I contacted the place that supposedly gave the bids, but all the bid is, is bid fifty-two hundred dollars, your portion twenty-six hundred. That's it. I went to a contractor in town, and he gave me a bid that's would save the city and myself approximately fourteen hundred dollars each. Now, I don't know about you guys, but way back mid to late eighties, when I was on council, I thought one of the jobs of city council is to kind of protect the finances of the community. And, you know, if you can get a job done for under half-price, hey, something's wrong. Hey, so if we need to look at it. At, at the same time, I, I was speaking with the public works director, and I was mentioning demolishing and disposing of the concrete. And I told them, my estimate is somewhere between four to five hundred dollars. Uh, I was, no, 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 that's way too low. Right, cause comment like, you, you need to take another chunk or chunk of your tobacco. And I don't use tobacco, but, you know, I, I know, it's a, an expression that's used, so, uh, it just so happened that I had a contractor come out to the house because he was going to do something inside the house. And as he was getting ready to leave, I asked him, uh, do you do concrete work? And he says, not as a rule, but we can do it. And I asked him, I have this sidewalk that I need demolished and hauled off. Can you give me a bid on it? Well, I have it right here, and it's four hundred and fifty dollars. Hey, and then I says, well, hold your at it. Would you mind giving me a bid on the replacing the sidewalk? He says, no, I, I get that. He says, I'm, I'm on my way to South Fork, but if you come by the office tomorrow, I'll have it ready for you. And to me, here's, here's what a bid should look like. Says, demo concrete sidewalk, disposal of concrete, and the cost, two-point-seven yards of concrete for sidewalk, the cost, uh, small yard fee for concrete, the fee, and then the labor, the fee. To me, that's a bid. And you can see, uh, I still would like to participate in the, in the program, but not at the fifty-two-hundred-dollar price tag.
What was your total bid from the, the independent contractor?
Twenty-three ninety-one.
And that was for demolishing, carrying out, and putting down new concrete, and it's twenty-three hundred?
Yeah, let's say twenty-four, round it off.
Twenty-five.
Hey, just, uh, to save some time.
Was the two-hundred-dollar difference, the, the, the difference is not, is not what concerns me so much as, as the trouble that you had with getting answers. That's, that's what concerns me.
That's, that's part of it, and, and I want to address that kind of, you know, but hey, this twenty-four-hundred dollars that you're speaking about, you tell me two-hundred-dollar difference.
Oh, oh, no, 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 you're right, you're right, I'm sorry. I was going twenty-six hundred, your share.
Right.
Your share, okay, you're, pardon me.
No, just so, you know, I like to get things.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so everybody understands everybody, and we know where we're coming from. Uh, I say, I would like to stay in, but not for, for that amount. And, uh, today, I say, I like to do my homework. Uh, I saw who the bid was from. So I says, let me call. So I called, and I asked them if they had some reserved time for the city of Montevista to do this concrete replacement. The answer was no. And I was led to believe first it was going to be June, then it was going to be September. Says no. And the reason given was that the city did not put down a deposit to reserve times for the work. And he says, we are now taking late October, early November. Well, that means I would have to wait another couple of months. And, and I don't think that's acceptable. Right now, it's been over five months since I, since I started the process. Uh, if, if I may, I would like to offer a possible solution. Hey, I have a driveway. When we purchased the house, it was already there. That, that driveway has not been used since we've been there, and I don't know for how long before, because it used to be a garage. Uh, whoever had the house prior converted it to a bedroom, so that was closed off. There is approximately sixteen feet of curb and gutter that need to be replaced or, uh, patched up. Uh, my suggestion would be if the city would come in and do the demo that was impossible for the price that I quoted, and do the sixteen-foot curb and gutter, I would take that as a city's part, and whatever it costs to, uh, lay down my concrete, I'll, 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 I'm not here for a free lunch, but I'm here for fairness.
Right.
And what is right.
So, what, what has happened here? What's, what's going on?
Who, who is the one, Rob is the, the public works that does the sidewalk projects?
It is the concrete replacement program that we initiated this year. Um, part of the problem was that I, as you guys know, I had my surgery May twenty-first. Um, I assigned one other person to work on the project. He got bids, the bids came in. City manager at the time signed those bids June seventeenth, so that is a legal contract. Um, I didn't see them until I got back in the office on July fifth, and I've been slowly trying to get myself caught back up and get things done, and I got letters out last week on those, and, um, Mr. Gonzalez feels that they're high, and I would probably agree with him on that. I thought they were high, but they've already been signed. Um, I'm not aware of his statement that they said there's not a slot open for the city of Montevista because unfortunately, when they were signed and accepted on seventeen, that is a contract that works both ways, for the contractor and for the city. So if they don't want to have the, meet the times, then we can either go back out to bid, see if somebody else can do it or not, but it has been a mess. I, I won't, won't deny, it's been, as first year doing it, it has been kind of messy. And that was, you know, undue to the surgery and a few other things that came up, and it planned on being, except in ICU, and most of this took place, so.
By the way, let me mention that as I was going to apply this, for this program, I was told I could go with the city or get my own contractor, and after seeing, if I had seen the bid in June.
Counsel, you need to understand something, that according to our municipal code, it is the responsibility of the property owner to fix, incorrect, and maintain their sidewalk. City is offering everything to try to give people an opportunity to sh- cost-share, and, and I, I get what Mr. Gonzalez is saying, and I fully respect his opinion and where he's at. And if, you know, and that's exactly what I told him. He doesn't, there's nothing by applying for the thing that says you have to do the program. You know, you can look at the finances, and if you think it's too fa- high, you don't have to sign up for it, but the city takes bids as we got them, and, and that's what I have to work out. Um, the bid that he's describing, if you would like to see, I can get you the actual bid. It is a little more detailed than the way he described it tonight.
Uh, excuse me, what I have is exactly what I said.
You have the bid from the contractor, and the latter that is a summary.
I have the bid that, uh, you took to me.
Second page.
Please.
Look at the second page.
Can I pass it down?
Yeah, pass it down. Those are, that's the exact bid that was submitted back to the city and sent out by the city manager. Did not do anything different than what was submitted to the city.
Okay, so the total on the second page is fifty-two hundred, and the other company that he went to is twenty-four hundred. Am I, am I comparing the same totals?
It seems that way.
I'm, I'm, I'm doing apples to apples now, right?
I see it that way, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and if you'll notice there on the second page, as was mentioned, there's a, up above, it says disposal, demolition, disposal of concrete. You have exclusions, disposal of concrete was an exclusion.
Do you have the twenty-four hundred I had with you?
Oh, yeah.
May I see it?
Yeah.
Do you mind? Who's the company of that?
And, uh, to go a little further, several other people that I spoke to on removing, uh, they say they wouldn't touch it because the curb and gutter is city, and they couldn't touch that. Uh, I, I finally got, uh, uh, permission from Mr. Vance, uh, to cut it. And for aesthetics and everything, I would rather see the city come in, take out the sixteen-foot section, redo it, and then let me finish the, uh, the sidewalk.
That is acceptable.
That is what?
That's acceptable.
That is acceptable?
Yep.
And does that stay within your budget, within the twenty-six?
Well.
Within what you're, does that stay within what you want to do?
Well, yeah, but, eh, you know, anything reasonable is okay. Fifty-two hundred is not reasonable. When I spoke to, uh, Rob here, I told him, you know, I go under the old philosophy of RPM. What is reasonable and proven, come here. Fifty-two hundred is not reasonable.
So if the city takes out the curb and gutter, then you're gonna, you'll put the sidewalk in for twenty-four hundred?
Well, whatever, whatever the amount.
The second bid?
Yeah.
That, that was lower, and you, and you will be happy with that?
Yeah, but if it's done in a timely fashion. Like I say, I've waited five months.
I know.
You know, and we're getting close to a time when you don't know what to expect from the weather. You know, I know you can force concrete out and cover it, but I don't think that's the best thing to do.
If counsel wants, I can have a crew out there next week where we schedule, or
Well.
Move our schedules around.
Hey. Do we have other people that are?
There's five people that were slated in that. Um, still trying to get ahold of this company to see what's going on because I was told September that they're doing it. I have not had anybody sign it yet, and if everybody feels that it's overpriced, then I, I'm not sure. I'll, I'll need to get with our attorney and talk to him.
I understand it was signed by former, former contractor, I get that.
If the company does not have the space to do the work in September, then we can both breach the contract and just everybody move out of business and go on.
Okay.
Okay, now, the reason, uh, if I spoke to a lady by the name of I think it's on there, Francine? That's her name, it's on top of that. Yeah, Tiffany. Tiffany is who I spoke to, and she's one.
At the first company or the second? At the first company or the second?
At, at the one where the bid is from.
From the Montevista bid?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, her name's Tiffany, and I guess the person that owns it now, I was under the impression that it was owned by Velazquez, but I guess he has since sold it, and Hasta is the name of the person now that.
Here's the deal. We will, on Monday, we will get this, we will meet with Mr. Gonzalez and get this figured out and, and resolved, at least get it headed in the right direction on Monday.
Is that reasonable to you?
Well, it, it is. Now, at what price?
Well, Mr. Gonzalez, looking at the two bids, and just what I know of the, the concrete, because I've had, uh, one of these, do a lot of concrete work for me, and I know that's what they do. The other bid, when they say they can do it, but it's not what they do, that, that is a concern to me, because if you're gonna do the concrete right, then you want somebody that's definitely a concrete person.
Okay.
So that, so with what chief or chief city manager had just said, and what, Rob, that they will get with you next week, because we really need to be apples to apples on this, and I don't feel like there's apples to apples.
Okay. Personally, I have had this contractor do work for me, and his is high-quality work. Hey, I, I didn't just pick somebody out of the blue sky. You know, I, 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 I know the person, uh.
You probably taught him, didn't you?
Probably did. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I know I did. And we're personal friends with his mother and his dad, his sins past, but, you know, I have no problem with the work that he has done for me.
I, so it's just an open concern.
Yeah.
So it's not, and nothing against him either.
Well.
I just want to make sure that we have all the apples there.
See, and, and I have another person. He does contracting for the federal government. Like a lot of these housing units, he does the, the concrete work. He was willing to do that, but again, his main concern was the demolition of, of the curb and gutter. Hey, he says, I, I won't touch it because that's the city's. Well, you know, I, I'm just trying to get what's fair and what's right. And right now, if you were to look at that concrete, and even the curb, uh, I'm not too bothered with the curb. But as I mentioned to the Rob, you gotta do a job, do it right. You know, I can go in and have them cut, make a patch. It's not gonna look very good.
Well, if you're good with the chief, city manager, and Rob meeting with you Monday and trying to get this worked out, I, that would be best, so then you got, everybody's on the same page. That's what I think, if everybody's good with that.
Well, you know, to me, I don't think this, it's only a bid, and you don't have to accept bids.
Except it's been signed.
Well, it's been signed, but.
You don't have to accept it, but the city does because the city has already signed for it.
We'll get the original RFP and have, uh, just your look at it too, make sure.
Excuse me?
We'll have, uh, we'll get the original RFP and have just your look at it, make sure that we did.
Uh, you know, you can see that, uh. Uh, you know, you can see that uh price is over valid for thirty days, et cetera. You know, it, it's, it's spelled out there and I think, I think you'd have enough to. And secondly, if they haven't scheduled you, how can it be valid?
Gil, can you meet us here at two o'clock on uh, on Monday?
Monday?
Yep. Yeah, all my other, my whole morning's full at two o'clock Monday.
Yeah, I could be here.
Okay, we'll meet right here.
Okay.
We'll get you your papers. We need that information to have for our minutes, so need one to print it off, make copies and then.
Okay. But you guys should have.
We should have one.
Yeah, I have copies, yeah. Look, I have the originals.
Okay, but down works.
Hey, thanks. The second thing I want to address is accessibility to city officials. I appreciate Chief slash City Manager, he gave me his cell phone number so I can contact him. I have a hard time. I call, and this will call me back, I never get. I wanted to talk to some members before today. I didn't know how to contact you. And, and I think as, and I'm not talking just from talking, I was sitting where you're sitting, let's see, what is fifteen, thirty years ago, or there about twenty-five years ago. And you have to be accessible to the public. There should be either a published list, and, and the reason I'm saying this, cell phones. People don't have landlines where you could go, where you could go to information. You can't get that for a cell phone.
Well, I still have a landline.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I, I, I know there's, there's a, there's some that I could, could reach and, you know, I, I've known Victor for a long time. I, you know, I could probably gone to see him and, you know, but uh.
And, you know, just to let you know, I've had people go to my house before.
Yeah.
And, and that's totally all right.
See, and that's what's, and that's why it should be. But, but at least for the rest of the people, I'm sure they would accept, would appreciate having phone numbers or email or something to contact.
And should.
Our emails are.
The email addresses are on the website.
Addresses are posted on the uh web city website.
Yeah.
And phone numbers, and the way I've done it in the past is if somebody wants to speak with council, I get their number and I give that number to you all to call them.
Except I didn't get any phone calls from anyone.
I never got a message, so we can work on that.
See, that's, that's where I'm saying communication breakdown.
Well, thank you for that.
Cause, okay. And thank you for, and I'm sorry it took so long, but.
You're fine.
That's quite all right.
Yeah, so, and I'll leave you on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you. Thank you. Chamber update.
Hello. I haven't seen you guys in a long time. But I have papers for you. This is just a breakdown, so in June, is that when we did the lease? I think it was June, right? And um so then I started keeping track of the statistics of our visitor information center. Just to kind of give you guys an update of what's happening and kind of show you stampede. I kept, I included stampede for summer because it's like one of the main things of like people come to the visitor center. And then you'll see in July, when the stampede office is there, I kept track what their numbers are greatly different than like the numbers for between June and August because, well, they were in there and people were coming in and, and buying tickets. But I wanted to still keep track of how many people were coming in and utilizing the visitor center. So I've broken it up into three categories. One was stampede. One was um like who wanted the visitor center or the information center. And then we actually get a lot of people who want to just use the bathroom or just in need of getting out of the sun. Or, you know, they're walking and they wanna come in and uh wash their hands or something, um or get water. So I kept, I broke it up into three categories. So there's that for you guys. And then I wanna just keep continually bringing you guys the statistics, probably every three months or so. Just depending on if I feel like there was lax in some or what. But um we are working on my first luncheon. So if you remember in June when I, or July when I came and presented my vision for the Chamber of Commerce, my first luncheon will be Tuesday, September fourteenth, from twelve to one. And I wanna keep, so I wanna do them monthly and I wanna keep that second Tuesday of every month um kind of be the thing. So it's in people's minds, so the second Tuesday of every month though, the chamber has their luncheon. And um so it's just gonna be really kind of informational of meet with me, what can I do for our businesses? Kind of like get to know each other and then I would like to start kicking it off with some more uh like topical things, but the first one will just be really kind of what can the chamber do for Montavista? Um, and then we are working on our holiday bazaar, which I believe it's either gonna be December fourth or December eleventh. We haven't set an exact date. As well as I'm helping with, I have help with Christie Bowie and then SLV Go of doing the Mountain Film Festival, which will be at the end of January. So we're working on our business, starting to get everything going for the wintertime. But yeah, that's all I have. Any questions?
You know, when you gave your presentation last summer, I was really excited about what you had planned. Um, I was like, how did your, how did it go when you started walking around with the different businesses and stuff?
So.
Door to door.
So I started off doing that and then I kept keep getting businesses that were like busy at the time. So I was like just able to give my card. So I'm starting to cold call as well as I send out like a mass email and setting up actual meeting times with the businesses. So if you do wanna meet with me, you can just contact the chamber and then, yeah. And I'm gonna continue to just go out as often as I can.
Is the luncheon gonna take place at the mixers or are you still planning on doing those?
The mixers will be, um, so my timeline, my mixer won't start until Octoberish.
I knew it was gonna be later. I just didn't know if this was gonna take the place of or can you?
Yeah, no, no, this one is, so the luncheon is.
Cause the mixers are fun.
Yeah, the luncheon is open to all and then the mixers will be members only.
Right.
And I think we'll do the, the mixers every quarter, so every three months, and we'll do the luncheons monthly.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's the film, um, we can switch them now, but yeah.
Wow, thank you. It's okay to plan this, it's true. It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brianna. Okay, water and wastewater rate studies finalization. You guys are at the floor.
Thank you. So I have a hand up for each of you. Oops, sorry. To you two. Uh, so first of all, it's good to see you again. I think the last time that uh we saw you was.
No, he said he was.
Uh, when we, when we discussed the master plan here. So, uh, my name's Nick Markop, um, with Alum Engineering. Got a short meeting agenda and we'll be kind of doing an interactive presentation rather than a slideshow um of the rate study. So uh this really was done in, in uh this rate study, water and sewer rate study was done in conjunction with the master plans. Uh, and this is, we're, we're gonna go through the rate study model. Sure Alice has one, is anybody missing? So we put together a rate study model uh for the water and sewer system. And this rate study model will kind of walk through how we put it together. Um, and it can be updated uh with, uh, in the future and reused. So this isn't kind of a one, one-off study, that the table and the information and the calculations and everything can be updated based on uh updated user information. So uh we did obtain water and sewer user information from the city. Uh, it was very helpful how they was provided and organized and, um, and we'll kind of briefly walk you through how this is put together. Uh, and go through a little bit of the background of the rate study. Not that we wanna focus on that, we wanna focus on the rate study itself, but I at least wanna show you how it's, how it's calculating everything. So um the blue tabs, it's kind of hard to see a little bit. If you can just like, uh, yeah, just there you go. Alice is moving the mouse there. The blue tabs there at the, at the bottom are the water uh rate study tabs and the green tabs are the wastewater. So we'll, we'll, we'll be going back and forth. And then uh gray tabs are calculations. So in, in the gray tabs, we have um user, we have budgets, budget information, we have water use information. We have a hard time seeing where your mouse is, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, can you not see it on the screen there?
No.
Okay.
Do we need to move that podium?
Can, is, give, if I do that?
It's okay, that'd be great. I'm sorry, y'all, forgive me. I'm using my Mac and my mouse.
Oh, it's on wheels. That's, that's easy.
Yeah, that would be great. There's a little bump. He's gonna fix it for me.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think you can mirror the screen. I was wondering, it's like, Alice, go to the gray tabs.
I didn't want to mess with his thing.
There you go, you mirrored it.
Yeah.
Did I move that in your way? Is that in your way? Okay.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. So if you go over to the, to the gray tabs, Alice, those, that's, that's the data entry tabs. And not that, you know, we expect you guys to get in here and dive in all the calculations, but if you click on a couple of those, Alice, you'll see we entered in user information uh uh based on the current, you know, tiers and rates. We actually calibrated the model based on historic income that the city is seeing based on usage and we came up pretty darn close uh with, with this predictive model. Uh, and then we use that uh to discuss the rate, to set the rates. So if you go back, we can start with the, just looking at the water um rate study we have. And I'll, I'll walk up here and kind of point so you can, since it's a little hard to read from where you're at. We looked at in-city and out-of-city revenues and then totaled them. Yellow, yellow cells are where we adjust the, the water model, or I'm sorry, the rate study for the water system and for the wastewater system. Uh, we don't, we don't enter in any other information other than the, in the yellow cells. And that's important as we go through and we show you how this scenario is to be brought. Uh, we can also enter in an estimated growth percentage um in-city and out-of-city. That would be a population growth or number of tap growth, percent-wise. For the purposes of this model, we, for right now, we just assume zero percent growth rate. That's, that would be, you know, a kind of conservative assumption, that you're not assuming growth to pay for current, infrastructure needs to be built now. So that's, that's what the yellow cells are and the growth rate. Uh, when, when rates are changed in the yellow cells, the estimated revenue with proposed rates will reflect the estimated change in income. So that's those, the total tab here that's kind of in a, a brownish, tanish color. So we can start with, or, so first of all, are there any questions just on the kind of the basics of, of what you're looking at? It's all done in Excel. There's a lot in the background, but I, I didn't figure I'd waste your time with all, all of the, what's, what's under the hood, if you will. So let's start with the, the water rate. So the sewer one is, I think, where you're gonna really wanna spend some time to discuss. Probably water too, but let's start with the water one. So we picked out a couple of proposed projects out of the master plan that you might find interesting to look at. What would, how would a rate, rates pay for those projects? The first one, let's talk about the, I'm just following down our agenda here, would be a one-million gallon elevated storage tank. As you know, we don't, the city doesn't have a storage tank. Um, and that's one project that was recommended in the master plan. So that's a four-point-four million dollar total cost. And we assumed all, you know, all the, all the bridge and interim financing to fund that project. We assumed a forty-year loan at two-point-five percent interest rate. That would be a typical, excuse me, USDA-funded project. Would be that interest rate, that term. We, uh, we assume no grant. That's a very conservative assumption. There typically is a grant component awarded with USDA projects. We don't know what that grant component will be, but there's other grants out there. There's DOL, there's, there's also whatever this infrastructure bill turns up that may or may not, you know, may or may not happen, whatever that is. But as, we assume no grant. That's very important. This mod, you know, we, we can, we can change that, but uh there typically would, would be some kind of grant included. So that calculates out to a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar annual payment that would need to be paid to build a, a storage tank. So a potential solution to that, we, we have, what, what, what do we need to fund? How, how do we need to raise rates to pay for that? A potential solution would be a base rate increase of twenty-five percent. So Alice, if you can plug in the, Alice will plug in the numbers. She can just simply put twenty-five percent in the base rate increase and it plugs in all the tiers. And you'll see that up, up in here in the, in the total, we needed a hundred seventy-five thousand. We got a hundred eighty-two thousand. So what we did to determine this twenty-five percent, we just iteratively added it, added to it until we arrived at what would pay that, what would pay that, that increase, or that debt service, I'm sorry. So, so that, that, that user ba- base rate increase results in the total that would pay the debt service. And what does that mean for your, for your users? So, so we, we did an estimated water user bills tab here that Alice will go to. I know this is a ton of information, and if you can just zoom in. So your typical users, you have, you have your rates, your rate uh uh categories from, so your typical users have five thousand, they're category five thousand, seven thousand, ten thousand, and such and so forth. So this, what this shows is a typical three-quarter inch residential that uses five thousand gallons or whatever would have a rate of thirty-five dollars. So that would be their bill if this rate was enacted. And such, and so forth down low. If they use seven thousand, it would be thirty-eight. Because you do have that, that uh what's sometimes called a uh conservation fee. Where you, where you add, add cost per thousand gallons that they're using. Again, using ten thousand, their rate would be forty-two fifty and so forth. So this, this uh, the rate study is very powerful in that we can really assume any project we want. We could figure out how much that project would cost and then we can determine what the rates would be to support that project. And what people really care about was what does that mean for my bill? That's what we see here. So another example that we had is if, if the city would like to just say have a hundred fifty thousand dollars in annual water main replacement project. So you did an annual block-by-block project uh funded by city only, city funds only, uh no grant assumed. So one, one solution to fund that would be a base rate increase of fifteen percent and a twenty-five cent increase for all tiers, which Alice has put in here. And a fifty cent increase for out-of-city users. And I should have mentioned this before, but your out-of-city users are charged about twice the in-city users are charged. So you can see here, this gets you a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars in revenue. So we can work with city manager, public works director, city council. You have a goal that you'd like to see happen with the water system. We can, we can run this model and tell you what, what you'll need to set the rates at to, to achieve that goal. And these are two goals. This, this is done separately, so the water storage tank scenario was separate from the uh water line uh replacement. So we can act, we can add them together, you know. There's infinite number of scenarios. So um we giving, furthering this discussion, we really wanna get into the wastewater rates because that's a project that has to happen. That we'll have to determine and, you know, the discussion will have to be had, whether you even wanna look at waters rate increases because of what the sewer rates are gonna do. So that, that's, I wanted to give you at least a background on the, on the water rates and how we, different scenarios we grant. And then get into the sewer rate study so you can see what, what kind of rate increases we're looking at to see if you have an appetite, you know, what citizens do for, uh, to look at the water rates. So, um, so I'll go, I'll go back through, we, we have another scenario here that I don't, you know, we could show you the same thing and type it in. So um so I'll go, I'll go back through, we have another scenario here that I don't, you know, we could show you the same thing and type it in. But it was one year of water fund expenses accrued over a five-year period. And and there is a, there's a solution, you know, a solution to that outlined in this in red. A rate, a set of rates that would achieve that. So are there any any general questions on on that, on the scenarios that we have or the model itself? So I think where the rubber really meets the road is the, obviously, the rates for water matter, but we are looking at funding a wastewater project here. And looking at what we need to have the rates for. So to give you a little bit of background, we have completed the preliminary engineering report and environmental report for the wastewater treatment plant improvements project. And and closed out of the existing wastewater treatment plants. We've also completed the funding application to USDA. So all that is in USDA's hands. There are no action items that we need to figure in that one. But we do need to discuss the rates. You don't need to act on, obviously, don't need to act on rates now, you don't need to make a decision now. But there is a rate increase associated with the project that's coming down the pipe. And so we've we've laid out a scenario where that rate increase can be done over time rather than one big increase for the citizens. Uh or the customers at one time. So um it, number one, item number one, under the green wastewater system improvement wastewater rate study examples, is the wastewater system improvements. And we have a detailed explanation of that in the master plan, if you have any questions, just let me know. But we have the project cost there, thirty point two million. We assume, we did assume a grant on this. We assumed uh twelve point six million in grant funding, seventeen point five billion in loan. The same four years, the same two and a half percent interest from USDA. Uh that that results in seven hundred thousand annual loan payment. There is an operation and maintenance cost associated with the wastewater plant, this is all for the master plant, for thirty-five thousand. Adding to one point one three five million in annual project cost, the for the debt service and the running thing. So we we have scenarios here, base rate increase two hundred percent, which would result in in-city fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents. And out-of-city sixty-one twenty, which Alice has highlighted in there. And a usage increase, because you do charge usage for sewer based on winter water use. A usage increase of in-city uh of increase to two two dollars and ten cents, increase of two dollars and ten cents to six dollars. And out-of-city increase of four dollars and twenty cents, which is twelve dollars. So that's a large, that is a a large increase. And so we wanted to break it, show what could be done, and and I'm sorry, it just to show you, it up here, it does show that one point. Uh approximately one point, here it's a little larger, but one point one three, it shows one point one five million dollars of revenue associated with that rate. So if you go over to the, Alice, to the to the tab where we break down the um user user rates yet over time. So what we've done here is is a simple, another table, I know I've thrown a lot of Excel at you, so bear with me. But there is another table here where you can change the years to increase rates. We we've set it so you can go over a period of five years. Um the project, this this life of a project, the plan, fund, design, permit, and bill will probably take four to five years. We eat, so you can simply add in however many years this rate increase would happen over time. Three years is plugged in now.
I will also just throw out that it's listed as annual, but it's really increments, so it doesn't, you don't have to do it yearly, but it's the number of increments that you want to increase it over.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Alice. So yeah, if you wanted to do, do the rate increase over five increments over, or let's say, just make it simple. Six increments over three years, that would be two rate increases every year. Or you could say assume three rate increases over three years. But this lays out, lays out those scenarios. And we can, we can um, you know, if if you're interested in in various scenarios, we can print that off so you're so you're looking at. It just, it was hard, you could see there's so many scenarios we could do that would be hard to hand you the stack of papers and say, here's what you're looking at. But all this can, it can easily be changed. So essentially, you're looking at, you know, it, what what our thought is, is to initially look at three rate increases over three years. Not less than that, because then you're getting into significant, you know, significantly higher rate increases over a shorter amount of time. Um we probably wouldn't want to go a whole lot more than that, because you need those funds to start coming in to pay debt service when the project's open. So three to four years of rate increases, one rate increase a year, two rate increases a year, or something like that would be recommended. Typically, it's one, typically, it's one per year, but it doesn't have to be.
We, when we went through this before, didn't we discuss that kind of in that first meeting? Doing it over like a three to five-year plan, right?
We, we did.
Three years or five, Rob?
We we had talked about five, um because we were looking at that from actual grant all the way up through the completion. What Nick is trying to point out is we actually need to have those funds available to start paying the debt service. Which would be at the time the plant is completed. So if the plant is completed at year four, we would need funding in year three to start making that annual payment in year four.
And we talked about doing that starting January of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, and and I don't want to step on uh the the toes of the the legal experts. But typically, if you're gonna take a loan out, I would recommend you do, the determination on the rate increases be discussed and and determined by the board. And then put in a single, you know, these are the rate increases, these are the dates we're gonna do them, so that it is done, it's done. So you know, they can't be backed up, but I I don't want to, you know, lower set my bounds on that. I think, I don't know if that would be a, that would be a. Uh you know, I'm not an ordinance, but.
It would have to be done by ordinance.
Okay.
Is is or resolution at the very least, where you would, as council, you would adopt a an ordinance or resolution. To specifically say that over these next twenty-two through twenty-four, we're going to adopt these increases. If they're, you know, just hypothetically, they're five percent increases to get us to where we need to be by twenty twenty-four.
And this, and to draw a distinction between what we're showing you now and and what we showed you before with just the master plan. The master plan only looked at one project, you know, and said, this is what the rate is to fund that project. Particularly wastewater, because it arrives at one project that needs to be done. This allows you to make all kinds of determinations of what you want, it's much more powerful for you for decision-making. It comes at a time where you're considering a a steep wa- wastewater user plan increase, so you may not want to take use of it to look at it for the water system. But you still do have a water system, you know, that needs attention and and and, you know, does need replacement there, it's discussed in the master plan. So I know I, we flipped through a lot of spreadsheets, um which is probably about less fun than PowerPoint, but uh. It's, I think it's important that you know that you have this tool for your use. And I I think it may be helpful if we give you some scenarios of a three-year and a maybe a three, three-year increase. But you know, one increase every year, um or any other scenario you'd like, but at least that one.
Three to five?
Three to five, I I think we would need realistically probably not exceed four years. From start to finish, it's probably about a four-year project. I mean, we're, we're gonna wait on USDA for a while and I don't know if you guys have any insight as how long they take.
It 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 varies, there is, so what complicates things is we submitted everything, and it has nothing to do with any anybody here. We submitted just the timing worked out right at the end of federal government's fiscal year. And USDA National Office takes all the money back from all the states at the end of fiscal year and then redistributes it back, and that takes time. And they're working through that right now. So it will be several ones before we hear back from USDA. But I will say, city staff jumped on this application for us and it got completed very quickly. It's not simple, it requires a lot of sign, sign this, fill that form out, myriad of items, so that one view.
So three to four year?
I think so, yes sir.
If you could get that done to us, that would be, so at least we have a better idea.
Cause we do need to discuss this during budget cycle this year.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and we can, if if there's, Rob, I can visit with you, if there's some scenarios you would like to see for budget, let's talk about them. We'll give, we'll give you every single scenario that you'd like to see for water and wastewater rates.
I would like to, cause that's really nice, but I still can't see.
No, I understand.
See Victor.
Yeah, I I I apologize, it's it's hard to present a ta- a table, so I I appreciate you bearing with us on it.
I appreciate all the work you guys have done for us, because I know this is what, the third meeting, fourth meeting we've had over this through council?
Sure.
I know, and you're trying to make it good for the citizens, trying to make it easy steps and not just that initial.
Tough thing, yeah, well, we really appreciate working with you and with your staff. Um so uh yeah, we're we're here to help and I'm happy to do it. So Rob, I'll prepare the.
Anybody else have any questions for?
Thanks for letting us drive the boat, Nita.
Thank you guys, thank you very much. Appreciate what you guys do. All right, we move into citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments, please limit your comments to three minutes. The council will not take action at this end. Any citizen comments? Should this get a ticker fixed together? Be sure and sign that paper up there.
Okay.
Is there a pen up there?
No.
Okay, for those of you who don't know us, my name is Cory Aguilah, my wife Kelly Aguilah. We're in group military, parents with a purpose. Um at this time, we are here to invite everyone to our next, our second send-off ceremony. It's gonna be for Ben Michael, uh recent uh high school graduate from Monta Vista, he's joining the Marine Corps. The ceremony will take place August twenty-eighth at eleven AM at the Faith Hinkley Memorial Park. Once again, uh police fire have been notified. And it's just a friendly reminder of an invitation for anybody and everyone who wants to attend and support our local. Uh youth who have joined uh the military.
What was his name again?
Uh Ben Michael.
I tell you, I, a bunch of us attended the last one, that was very impressive. Unfortunately, I can't be at this one, I know you'd ask me to speak at it, but the next one definitely, but uh very, very impressive if you haven't uh seen this. They do such a phenomenal job with this, that the last one was great.
Thank you, so yeah, we and we'd like to have the same results as we did the first time. So this is our sec- first one went well, we're hoping to that as they keep going, they get better and better, but yeah, we expect. We expect the same, if not better, out of the second one and as we go on, so. A friendly invitation for whoever wants to uh stop by and show their support.
Awesome, thank you. I appreciate what you guys do on that, um I unfortunately will not be here, but Ben came to my office today and I had a great conversation with him. And it's nice to see a young person so excited about what his decision is. And it's, and I've known Ben his whole life, so it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I, yeah. He's an interesting young man, and that that's, that's really awesome. And I was at the last one, and I appreciate you guys so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we did actually have another um Andrea Spila. He had left, but we didn't know that he was leaving, otherwise we would have done him the ceremony as well. We found out two weeks before. So, but we did, we were able to go and visit with him, Cory and I, and we gave him a package as well. A little token of our appreciation for what he's doing.
We're new, so like we we depend on like family or recruiters to get ahold of us and let us know, hey, we got one coming up. And the ball was dropped and it was, it's just getting started and communication between everybody and.
Isn't there another one leaving in September or something like that?
I don't know, we haven't heard anything.
That's Ben.
Yeah, Ben's leaving.
Ben's leaving September.
Okay, September, but Ben said there was another one from Monta Vista that's maybe not until next summer.
Yeah, hope to get ahold of him and talk to Ben, yeah.
Ben said the recruiters, there are key, three of them, he's gone through three in his timeframe that he's been.
Okay.
And yeah, one retired and one got called back to active duty, and now he's with another one.
So then I'll, yeah, I have his contact information, so I'll get ahold of his recruiter.
Sergeant Preston?
Yes, out of Pablo, yeah, yeah, he'll, he actually, he will actually be, he actually plans on attending also, so he'll be here.
Very good.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Citizen comments? Okay. Public hearings, licenses, resolutions, non-ordinances, contracts. We'll go to staff proposal reports and actions. City manager chief, chief city manager. Once again, we really appreciate you, just so you know.
Hi, mayor, council, good evening, um just some real quick updates. First, sky high, the gas issue, um we got that resolved on Tuesday with the pressure with Excel. Excel was a great partner in this and stepped up to the plate and did the right thing and um. They did, they met, we needed to have two pounds of pressure coming into the building. There was issues where with the original design where they could do it and Excel stepped up and um we didn't have to get. Any Judge Trujillo-type people involved in this, so it it worked out really well, and I gotta say, kudos to Rob. I think you were on that first call, mayor, Rob did a phenomenal job of helping uh helping maneuver this, so we didn't have to get any attorneys involved, so. But it worked out and Excel was a great partner and uh and can't say enough about Excel and then the the guys from Elcon and as well as Rob. So that's done and we're moving on there. Sky, another sky update, Elcon's gonna start the landscaping and building out of the area, the the outer area on the west side there. That's going to be the, I think, second week is what Kyle, Tyler told me. So all that's, so there's gonna be a lot of activity going on on the outside there, so we've had a couple of requests to use the building. Unfortunately, we're just not able to because of of the way the schedule is and they're really pushing hard now to try and get this finished so that we are done in October. So that, the one issue, that there was an issue coming up about using it and part of that's because we can't, because they're gonna be building out that uh west end of there. So um again, they're moving along, if you haven't been down there, every day you go down there, it changes significantly. Uh we had a great meeting on Tu- Tuesday uh about kitchen design, final kitchen design, and they were gonna start building up kitchen uh or uh framing it and everything in the inside. So uh that's, it's moving very quickly now. Uh U R A, uh we've been working with Mark Garcia in the U R A, we need a hundred thousand emails. And regarding um one seventeen Adams, uh there's uh there, we just posted uh RFPs for that. uh, there's, uh, there, we just posted, um, RFPs for that, so anybody who's interested in, in that, um, they have to do proposals before the U R A, uh, the Urban Renewal Authority Board, and those will be on Sep- is it September second?
September seventh.
Seven.
So, questions are due by the twenty seventh of August, and will be answered by the thirty first, and then all bids have to be in by September first.
Yeah, and then the proposals before the U R A is on September seventh, I had seven for some reason, but.
What time on September seventh, does anybody know?
Usually that meeting's at six PM.
Usually what, si- at sixteen?
Six PM.
Is it open to the public?
Public, yeah.
For the U R A?
Yeah.
Yes.
It is.
Hey, you're on, I believe the mayor's on board.
I, yeah, I am.
So, anyway, they're accepting RFPs for one seventeen Adams, and I know there's some interest in that, so, uh, hopefully we'll get something in there soon. Um, uh, we have several applications already for the events and the managers, I think we've got four or five already, so, I, it closes on Oc- October thirty first, and we will move quickly to get the interviews and, and screen those and get the interviews set up and, uh, try and get that done sooner than later. Um, we have a meeting on Monday to work and finalize, I was hoping to have it done this we, uh, for this council meeting, but there's just no way that we could get it, cause we're still waiting for, um, we're waiting for information from other events, uh, um, event centers on costs and stuff like that. We wanna make sure that we bring you guys a good proposal for costs for rental and, and all that, so, we actually have a meeting on Monday and we're gonna fi- uh, finalize it, um, did anybody hear it, Rob? Well, they, they're, we're meeting on Monday, um, they're, we're supposed to be meeting on Monday, if you do, anyway, we're gonna meet on Monday and, uh, and finalize that and hopefully have before the next council meeting, um, for you guys to hopefully approve, or kick it back to us one way or the other on the costs for rental and, and everything associated with it, so. We have a pretty good, um, working document right now that Jaime's been working on, and we've got stuff from other places, so, uh, it's, it's looking pretty good. Uh, as promised, uh, Jaime is working on possible grants for the tennis court as we had talked about last, uh, council meeting, about, uh, and him and Rob have been working on that to get the costs and stuff like that, he, he found, uh, promising grant with, uh, U S T A, United States Tennis Association, or, so anyway, that, that's looking actually pretty promising, but, uh, they've been, uh, working on that, so hopefully he'll get that grant and we'll get that submitted. Uh, met with One Cent last night, um, Council Lock was on, on that, uh, we had a really good meeting, we got it organized, so there's an actual, uh, president and vice chair, I believe Ken is the vice chair, he got all told to be the vice chair, so, thank you, Ken, for stepping up and being told to do that, um, but, but it was good, we just needed to get that a little bit more organized and, and then setting meetings and stuff, so that there's clear communication with One Cent. As well as One Cent, uh, either the chair or vice chair will be coming before council, uh, I think one, at least once a quarter is what we decided to give the entire council an update on the One Cent, so as, as they should be, it should be them, not us, giving you guys the update on the One Cent stuff. So, we got that organized, that, that actually went really well last night, a lot of talking. Uh, finance, a- as you heard, Anita's doing an exceptional job, um, she should be caught up by next week, and then, uh, we'll be getting heavy into budget season. And, um, so we'll have to, uh, get some meetings scheduled, some working sessions, we, uh, scheduled, coming up here fairly quick in September, so, uh, just kinda put that on your, on your radar, that's, uh, that's coming up, so more to come on that. Um, the optimistics, I'm glad they're here, uh, we got the grant submitted today, uh, and it went, uh, it actually went pretty smooth thanks to Anita and Ken and Adam, that, they did, they did a lot of the work, and it, but it, it went, I thought it went pretty smooth. I say that because I wasn't involved in it, so that's why it was, but they did a, they did a, they did a really good job and got submitted, so, um, now it's just hurry can wait, right, I, when are we supposed to hear about it?
Four, six weeks, four, six weeks, so.
Anyway, kudos to them, good work on that, and let's just keep our fingers crossed that we'll do that, so, that's looking good. Uh, from city manager side, that's about all I've got from there, P D, uh, side, very busy, um, now, school's back in session, we're visiting the schools and getting back into the schools, I mean, granted, it just started this week, uh, a- as I've told you, we spend a lot of time doing follow-up investigations, um, it really takes away from our proactive, then we've had people out, um, out on paternity leave and, um, and sick, and then, uh, we had somebody catch COVID, and, um, so, i- it's been pretty challenging keeping our schedule, um, but we're keeping up. So, that's about all I got for P D and city manager, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
At episode one, you said Sky High would be finished, you got the, the front end of it done?
Well, they're, they're gonna start.
Should be done by mid-August, or mid-October?
Uh, no, uh, no, so it's, it's scheduled, uh, the, the schedule is showing that will be done by the end of October. That we should have the permanent certificate of occupancy.
Can we give out, um, what is it, temporary certificate of occupancies before then? Or i- is it because of where the work is that it's not gonna be?
Well, th- that's a challenge with, um, because obvi- as you know, we get the T C O, the temporary certificate of occupancy comes from the county. And the building inspector there, um, I, I, in, in no way am I throwing him under the bus stuff, cause he does a phenomenal job, and he's been very great to work with and he's easy to work with. But there, I shouldn't necessarily say pushback, but there's kinda some hindrance to keep giving out temporary certificates of occupancy, because the more we do that, the longer we're gonna prolong the, the project, because it, they literally, I mean, you think Stampede, Elcon had to stop for, what? A week, ten days, and basically do, do no work, so that sets them back, then we had Fair, and so if we keep, keep doing this, we're going to be into November, December before we are completely done, so, there's gonna have to be, at some point here, really draw a line in the sand and say, let them get it done, or what? But, um, I, I mean, that's, they're, they're pretty optimistic, I, I mean, way more than not, that we will be done in October. I mean, it could be the second week of October, it could be the last day of October, but the plan is, is, the way it's going is that it's going to be done in October. It's just, and, and I know there's people wanting in there, like, sooner than later, and I want them in there sooner than later, I think we all want them in there sooner than later. It's just so close that it's like, if we say we're gonna, it's, we're ready October twenty first, it may be October twenty eighth, that, before we can get the occupancy, so it's, it's that close, uh, and unfortunately, I don't know that, um, I don't know that he will give us another temporary certificate, I think if we're that close, that we probably can. Some of this is gonna really be dependent on, um, and I know talking with them, is getting the fire suppression system. Once the building's done, but they're probably not gonna give us the certificate on that until the building's done. But, they, you know, I mean, might be within a week here or there, just move it which way, I don't know, but, uh, the goal is, and it's optimistic that we'll be done for sure by the end of October, it's just that close. I wish I could give you, I know that sounds like a total political answer, right, and I'm like politi- like politician, because, but I,
No, it's, it's fine, because, no. I love it.
But it's just so hard to, it's just so hard to determine, because it's that close, and again, every time we kick the can down the road and, and keep doing this, then we're just setting them back.
No, it, it's a hard answer, so that, so that when someone asks me, I can say, well, Chief says, and that's all I wanna be able to do, is say, well, Chief says.
It's hard. Yeah. Yeah, I, believe me, I, but believe me, cause there's, there's a couple of events that I, I have, I would really like to see get in there, and unfortunately, I just don't know right now that, um, I wanna commit to them, but then I also don't want to put them out, you know what I mean? Uh, cause I, I know Bob's here, literally in the room tonight, he's, he's got one of the events that wants in there, and I hate to sound like I'm waffling on, but I just don't know, just the problem, and, and I think, Rob, I think we can attest that, it's, it's just that close. I, I mean, we could, uh, it's one of those, if, if it's getting that, that close and, and we have to make a decision, I mean, I'll, I'll surely go talk to Randy and to Elcon and say, we have this event, and can we get a, i- if it's that close, can we get a T C O on it? And, uh, I, I should be willing to have that conversation. I just don't know that right now, like, in this week or even next week would be the right time to do that. I think we just need to wait and see where they're at, like, in another two weeks, and then, a- and then go to him and say, okay, we're pretty sure where we're gonna be. If it's that close, can we get a T C O for the event? So, and, and I, I think we could have that conversation with Randy, and I think if it's that close, just the way Randy's been working with us, uh, at, at the county, I think he'd be at least open to at least hear our presentation.
Have we got any applications in for the events planner, manager?
Yes, I think we got.
Yeah, he mentioned, yeah.
Yeah?
Yes, I think we got like five.
Oh, I thought you got, I thought you said city manager.
Oh, yeah, we got some there too.
Okay.
Not soon enough, but.
Cool, awesome.
Not soon enough.
We, we need more.
Need more?
We need more, and quickly. I still like playing cops and robbers, you know, I still like playing cops and robbers. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk.
Good evening, council, um, just a few brief things that I wanted to go over with you, um, first of all, um, I'd like to invite you all to, before you leave tonight, to stop over in the courtroom and take a look at our new security, um, entranceway. So, the magistrate courts out of Durango, they hold magistrate court here about three times, um, during the summer months, and Judge Candellary and the US Marshals come over, they have donated a security gate that is set up in the courtroom now. Um, they will maintain it on a yearly basis, but it is here and has been donated to the city of Monta Vista, to the courtroom, so.
Awesome.
Like, for you guys to stop by and just peek at it, see, it's, it's pretty cool, it's the way we've got it set up. Um, we didn't have it completely set up, I have magistrate court tomorrow, so they'll make sure that all the levels are set correctly, cause right now, when you walk through it, even the name badges will set it off, so, they're gonna set at court on Wednesday, all we heard was beep, 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 beep. So, they're gonna set that up and get it all ready for me tomorrow, um, but it was, it's a nice addition to the courtroom, so. Um, the other things I wanted to touch with you guys is, um, Colorado Municipal League is holding their Fall District Eight meeting in Lahara on Tuesday, September fourteenth. Um, it will be from four PM to seven thirty PM on the fourteenth, and I just need to know before August twenty seventh if you all, who all would like to go, so, mayor?
What is this meeting about?
Um, so, they basically go over, let's see, um, they will discuss C M L's legislations, um, agendas and topics from municipalities that include up to COVID, water, sewer, police, clerks, they kinda touch on just a little bit of everything, but mostly legislative items.
What was this at, Ken?
In Lahara.
That was at four o'clock?
Four PM to seven thirty, um, there will be dinner, um, there's a cost of twenty dollars per person, um, but that's paid for out of your all's budget,
Four thirty, four thirty.
You have that set aside for that.
Can you sign me to?
Please sit me down, do. Do you hear me?
Gotcha, okay. Um, the other conference that's coming up is, um, September twenty second and the twenty fourth, it's the C M L, um, s- excuse me, um, it's the C M L conference, um, their yearly conference, it will be held in person this year in Westminster at the Weston Hotel. Um, some of the things that they cover, they have a mayor's lunching, luncheon and afternoon session. They have some of the things on their agenda is building support for water and wastewater, um, wastewater rates, um, what to expect from an economic developer, um, they have a clerk's luncheon, they have a public works luncheon, um, so there's a lot of different sessions that take place at the C M L as well.
The twenty second through the twenty fourth?
Twenty second through the twenty fourth of September.
I, I'm going to that, mayor.
Are you?
Yeah, yeah.
I register for it.
I'd like to go that one, but let me get back with you to make sure I can, okay?
I'm, I might get bigger out to need all checking, but definitely.
Okay. And, again, that's also an August twenty seventh deadline, um, for early registration.
Okay. And it's like three hundred bucks, isn't it?
Correct.
And that's our expense, that's not paid for by the city, right?
No, that you've guys, you have that budgeted in your budget. Okay, um, other than that, the clerk's office has been really busy, um, it's the election times, so, making sure that, um, we keep up on all the election laws and rules that are coming down, um, I have three packets that are currently out, I do not have anybody who has brought those packets back in yet, so at this point, we're still kinda up in the air for the election. You have any questions?
Yep, on the c- city side for, um, the courts?
Yes.
Are they still looking for community service projects?
Yes, judge, um, gives useful public service quite often, um, that's something that, uh, the city attorney, Mr. Trujillo, um, works with the defendant and recommends a fine or useful public service.
Clean up weed on Sky High Court.
Okay.
I need to shovel in the bucket, get rid of go-hits. Uh, we'll keep them from wanting to do anything bad again, especially if you make them do barefoot.
Okay.
Thank you, Nita. Public Works, Rob?
Good evening, keep my report pretty short, um, we're busy as normal, a lot of just normal maintenance. We've got all of the city's properties mowed and started working on property cleanups for other properties that haven't been done and have received work orders for, um, the weeds have really gotten out of control with the recent rains. Um, we are also doing some potol patching, um, in the parks, believe it or not, we've already lost one of our first seasonals, um, had to go back to school, so, I hate to say it, but we are heading towards winter, one more month, we'll be shutting the park down. So, summer is almost gone, unfortunately. Um, utilities, we've had a series of, um, line breaks, and they've been doing a good job getting those repaired on a timely manner. Um, and then, Chief kinda touched on it, Sky High's been taking an incredible amount of time. Um, we are going to start the airport project August twenty third, we'll have our pre-construction meeting, so that'll get going. Um, still waiting on some materials to get our street project going for the year, and unfortunately, you heard tonight, um, letters for the concrete program's not going quite as well as I'd hoped, um, I'll talk to Chief about that on Monday. Um, we may, um, just sitting here thinking tonight about it, may just go ahead and pull the program and go back out and maybe do something next year if it seems to be an issue, so we'll talk to Chief and we'll have some decisions on what we can do. But I really do want that program to succeed, didn't get off to an auspicious start, so, we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
And with that, like I said, I keep it pretty short, so, see if you guys have any questions for me. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Christian? This is gonna take forever.
So I want that one, I think I should probably go over the entire report. No, just kidding, so this one's gonna be pretty quick this evening, as always, our packet is quite a bit bigger of our, our report within your guys' packet. I mean, everything that's been going on over the past couple of months, it has been pretty busy for I T. But one of the few things I'm gonna highlight tonight is we are now fully on a new infrastructure back here. We have new storage units, new storage switches, just about everything has been switched out, upgraded or replaced. So we have almost wrapped up the entire server revamping project. Other than that, we have a couple of other small things to fix. We had someone out here looking at our HVAC because that failed on us epically last Friday. And, you know, little things like that that are gonna continue to move forward with. But other than that, don't have a whole lot to report tonight. So if you guys have questions.
Thank you.
I mean, if you'd like, I could stay up here for another half an hour and explain quite a few of the small things because we are replacing computers and all sorts of other fun stuff, but I kinda figured you guys just would get bored listening to me.
Yes.
You do a great job, thank you.
Me too.
I think we do a good job when no one realizes that we're even doing anything. What goes on, do realize is when things aren't working.
What goes on behind the wall, you're doing a great job. The wall, the wall.
That sounds so ominous.
Yeah. In that room where they have all the new stuff. All right, we'll move on to council committee, city commission, and council reports. And we'll start that, okay, Counselor Locke?
Uh, I would, all I've got is I wanna, um, repeat Mr. and Mrs. Adelus' um, invitation to come to the military send-off. It is, I went to the first one, and it is one of the most heartwarming, encouraging, happy and touching. And how you mix those all emotion, those emotions all together, I'm not sure. But it wa- it was just, it's, if you haven't been to one, you need to go, you need to go. And they, and these young people, um, it's not like sending you get off to college. It's just not, it's a totally different, you're putting them in a whole different thing. And for them to know that they've got their hometown back in them, that helps them. So that's all that.
Counselor Foster? Short or long?
You know, I ki- I kind of, uh, ran out of steam last night, so you're okay.
Um, like usual, I have no report. Thank you.
For being short.
Um, with the, the, the old finance director gone and the city manager gone, um, do you think I, it would be okay to do an audit on S- on Sky High? Just on Sky High? I don't know, it's been brought to my attention a couple of times and I just don't want to, uh, just push it over and say, no, we don't need it. So I was just thinking maybe we can do an audit on, uh, the Sky High, so. Um, but other than that, I don't really have anything, so, but. So I don't know what we need to do to make that happen, but maybe we can have that done just for, uh, transparency and, you know, the switching of the baton, I would say maybe, so.
I wouldn't be opposed. I have some questions too.
Until it's done, so that everything is in the books, if you will.
Okay, so, and that's fine, you know, just, you're guys' counsel, I'll take that all the time, you know, so, cool.
Not a bad idea.
Awesome.
And, you know, from a, a lot of times, city managers have come on board like a complete audit so that they know there's no surprises when they step on board. I don't know if you really wanna go that route necessarily, but, but I know that that sometimes is a request for somebody because they're jumping into a situation if they don't know what's going on and then something happens, they get caught in the middle. I don't know, that that's kind of a judgment call there, but certainly, I think, with the Sky High and the county money that the cities put at risk and all the things, probably wouldn't be a bad idea there. Might think about the other side also, but.
Waiting just a little bit. Okay, cool, thank you.
I would agree to that.
Yeah.
Do we wanna get really technical and do a forensic audit?
Do we make that an agenda item for next meeting so we can motion and approve? Or can we do that now, or did we, or did we just get approved?
I, I'd probably wait until next meeting, probably to get it on the agenda and then maybe think about whether you wanna do a full-blown, uh, audit or if you wanna just do, I think the Sky High would be a, be my recommendation. You'd definitely do that for sure.
Yes.
Whether you go further, kind of a judgment call.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
No idea, I guess.
Lauren?
Is that all you got, Victor?
Yes.
All right, Larry, you're taking your time, Martha's time, and Victor's time. Be like Christian, we're just gonna stay here for the next half hour.
No, just kidding, just kidding.
For, for the community, because I know there's a lot of people that do watch YouTube, so, um, big thank you to everyone. Chief, everybody that's been working on the projects, Rob, everything that you guys have been doing. Because I know you got thrown into the middle of the Sky High Park project and, uh, kinda blindsided real hard. You still gotta wobble from it, but you'll be, you'll get straightened out. But thank you guys for all that you're doing on that. I know it's been tough to deal with in some of it. Um, I wanna go back with, to reiterate what Martha said. The military send-off, supporting these young people. Like I said, Mike or, uh, Ben was in my office today, 'cause I've known him his whole life, and I had a great conversation with him. He is going into the Marine Corps, he took, explained to me what his plans are, and he has laid his future out. And we need to support him for that. He wants to go into embassy security and based on what I've seen on the news, and he's excited about doing it. So when you got young people going forth to protect the freedoms that we have right now in this great nation, everybody needs to go support them. And then, uh, again, pay attention to your surroundings and what's going on in your neighborhoods. Um, there's a lot of little guys out there thieving pretty bad right now. Um, I know they've been hitting the county out pretty hard. Um, I have a friend of mine lost somewhere in the vicinity of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of equipment and tools. So pay attention to what's going on around you, pay attention to your neighbors, definitely pay attention to what's going on in parking lots because it's happening. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting until September.
Second.
Second. Thank you all for being here.